Electronic versions that are like, I just want the highlights. I just want this level of detail, you know? And that would have been super customizable. But I see we're gonna be, oh, I see on air.
Um, I don't seem to have permissions to access our SharePoint.
Oh, that's awkward. Yeah, we fired you earlier today, so.
Get out of here.
I don't know.
They'll change their mind.
Okay, yeah, that's the admin form. How did you get to?
I tried to sign into SharePoint. And this is where it dumped me.
Oh, okay. Go back to the previous tab.
Oh, I already closed out of the sign in page.
That's fine. I'll send you a direct login.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Allison, we're gonna get, we're gonna get started up here. That's okay. Because let's see, we have on air and it is 6:01. All right. Either way, yeah. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our November 25th, 2024 meeting of the Lunenburg Planning Board. We haven't seen you all in about a month with Veterans Day. Thank you for being here. If you are, this meeting is recorded, as always. If you are watching at home and you want to participate, you can either log in through the, or call in through the Zoom link and phone number listed on our agenda on the town website, or you can bop on down to beautiful Town Hall and we're in the upstairs meeting room, as we always are. If you're here and want to participate, congratulations, you're here. And I think that is everything we have to say at the forefront to make sure the meeting's good and legal. I'll call us to order. If there's anyone who wants to lead us in the pledge, they're welcome to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get going with business tonight, because I know there's people in the room, I do want to make sure we're all aware that there are public hearings that are on the agenda for 791 Lemonster Road, 795 Lemonster Road, and 70 Kilburn Street, all of which are stormwater management permits. Those have been continued to our January 8th?
December 9th.
December, December 9th, sorry. Right, this, we're not in December yet, are we? No.
Not quite.
Okay, to our December 9th meeting. So if you're here for that, you can have your evening back. And otherwise, we will open for public comment. Seeing none, and again, if you, if you are in the Zoom chat, feel free, if you do want to comment, use that hand raise feature to let Logan know that you want to speak. Seeing no general public comment, I'll move us on. We, to Chair and Directors' reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you to the board. First, I want to note, I wasn't here and I can't take any credit for it whatsoever, but Planning Board was successful at town meeting with their one zoning initiative for the water district, and that was a tremendous accomplishment, and it failed before in spectacular fashion, and, and they, you know, took it out of the ashes and resurrected the phoenix. So kudos to the board for that effort. Wish I could take this part in it, but I look forward to future efforts like this.
May hop on that quickly, because I just want to throw out a real big thank you to the members of the town who were at town meeting and voted, special town meeting and voted. But I really want to call out the many members of town who have engaged in that process over the past few years to find a water supply protection district bylaw that could be palatable to the town as a whole. That was kind of a fine needle to thread, and I was really impressed with the amount of public engagement we got that let us get to the place there was a good bylaw for everyone. So this credit kind of across the board in town on that one, so thank you.
Great. In terms of the permitting pipeline, the upcoming applications you can expect before the board, we've got a couple of stormwater permits that are coming on the 9th in addition to the public hearings that'll be continued. So it'll be busy on the stormwater front. We also have a couple of site plan review applications that we're expecting, they're not big ones. So that's on your itinerary for December into January, and of course, we have electric AV and a horn. So, you know, it's gonna be a little bit busy this winter, but manageable certainly, and we'll get the peer reviews in line, and so you can expect a lot of that information so you can deliberate appropriately. One project that we did expect that was coming forward as an application was the Marshall Park project, and that has been put on hold, as you probably know. We're not sure what the status of that is or when it's gonna come back, but it'll be that first phase, you know, rather limited site plan review, stormwater application, probably sometime in the spring, but they need CONCON approval as well, so nothing imminent there. And final note is the master plan committee meeting coming up in the library, 6:30 to 8:00, December 4th, next Wednesday, and this is gonna be the final one, final input, final public meeting to get public input as we generate some of the implementation items and conclude the master plan process. So please show up, please tell people about it, it's very important. This is the final shot, things are gonna get, not necessarily written in stone, but, you know, codified, so it's essential that all the effort the planning boards put into, the master plan steering committee and so forth, that that culminates in a really good turnout for that meeting, December 4th, in the library, right in the main hallway. That's next Wednesday, 6:30 to 8:00. Appreciate it. We could see you there. That's all I have.
Piggybacking on the master plan, I would remind us as well that the final survey is also still live. The results from that survey will be used in part to inform the discussion at that public meeting. It's not the case that if you're doing public meeting, don't need to bother with a survey. If you don't, if you're doing the survey, don't need to bother with public meeting. The survey informs the discussion that then happens at public meeting. So head on over to planlunenburg.org. That is the website that has all of our master planning info as we go, and you can find the final survey there. Again, planlunenburg.org. Take that survey sooner rather than later, because the more responded, we have enough respondents to function, but I'll tell you, our last survey was through the roof in response, in number of responses, and it would be great if we could keep that up. Planlunenburg.org, take the survey, come to the public meeting, make sure your voice is included in the voices that get those opinions about the town codified, because that's what, that's the document we're gonna use looking forward for zoning bylaws and everything else. Love it. I believe that's everything from me as well. And now we are going to go on to approval not required plans. As the dime store reminder, A&amp;Rs, approval not required. Funny that the board has to vote on them, but we're not voting to approve, we are voting to endorse and say, yes, this is something that in fact does not need our approval. If you think that's weird, many people agree with you, welcome to Massachusetts. And here we go, our first one on our docket is 100 Townsend Harbor Road.
Good evening, I'm turning that a little bit more this way.
Please, can you?
Yes, please. That's perfect, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Mark Wheeler from Topper Land Survey, and presenting a plan 100 Townsend Harbor Road. It's owned by Steven Stafford and Peter Stafford, and what we're looking to do is create five lots. Three of them will be standard lots, two of, lots one and four will be reduced frontage lots. All the lots meet the frontage zoning lot width requirement and upland area requirement.
All right, and I don't know if you have anything else to share before, I know these are often not super complex, but, and it, just want to double check that they went through, that they did go to the Board of Health and get whatever response the Board of Health needs to get and everything, correct?
Yes, we got all the.
They've satisfied that, Mr. Chair, and through you to the board. My recommendation is to endorse as proposed, the plan is properly prepared. What I look at, what my concern is, does it show what the statute requires?
Yep.
For the board to endorse, and then they must endorse, but, you know, is it adequate frontage under the statute? Is it adequate access under the statute? Does it meet the criteria?
Yeah.
For approval, and it does, and the plan is properly prepared as well. So I would recommend endorsement.
Thank you. And again, just as a note, you will sometimes in, in these, hear us ask questions that, well, frankly, we ask them in part to make sure that you or the applicant has answers to those questions. The result of those answers really isn't, doesn't impact whether or not we approve it, but the number of times that people have come to us, gotten an A&amp;R done, and then come back months later going, oh, we didn't realize we were kind of screwing ourselves up there with any number of, that's why we ask about the Board of Health and everything, just to make sure. That way, does it, does it impact our vote? No. Does it sometimes catch things and make applicants' lives easier? Yes. Okay, great, and this is one property being, I never remember the technical terms.
Yeah, one, one property being divided into five lots.
Okay. Let's see, one, two, three, and you're using the two of them, lots one and four are the reduced frontage requirements?
Correct.
Yep. Okay, I would turn to the board and ask if we have any questions or comments from the board. Hearing none, I look at the topos and everything, to me, this seems pretty straightforward. I would look for a motion for the, from the board if there are no comments or questions. If people want another moment to review, we can do that too, just say so, that's fine.
Motion to endorse A&amp;R for 100 Townsend Harbor Road.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Then that's approval from, well, no, approval, endorsement from the board, and I believe we're all set there.
I'm guessing it on down. Logan will have the proper implement, I think, in a second.
Oh, because it's the Mylar, yeah.
Downside and in the box. This pick probably will.
These have to be Sharpie, I think.
I have a not-so-fine point Sharpie.
That's what we usually use. That's fine.
Doesn't make my signature any worse.
Instruments, but Sharpie's best.
All right.
It's not an endorsement of any product by the, I don't want.
Although Sharpie, I'll tell you what, if you do want endorsement from me, maybe my ethics could be waived for a bigot, no. All right.
Sign's gonna put Sharpie out of business.
Okay, so that is it, we're getting the Mylar signed for 100 Townsend Harbor, and next up is an A&amp;R, thank you. You can grab the Mylar when we're done, because you can just take it, right?
Yep.
Yep. And next up will be Goodrich Street and Reservoir Road. I love A&amp;Rs.
They're not all that easy.
No, they're not.
Some of them can be very.
This one's an easy one.
Amen. Take it away.
Why did you do that? I'll just make a note while we're waiting for the applicant to set up is that the applicant form itself is also important review by the board, because sometimes that contains information about property owners that need consent to, if I click over here, to the plan that's being presented, so always take a look at that, too.
Was it with you we hit that, we hit that recently with a question? Was that, I feel like we had that question recently.
Sometimes it comes up that was this property owner affected by this A&amp;R? Are they aware of this and did they consent to it? That's an essential, obviously.
Wouldn't that be exciting if you could just carve off a couple acres of neighbor's property, be like, well, they didn't show up.
All right, for the record, Chris Aaron's with Hating Engineering here on behalf of John Keating for the A&amp;R subdivision of a property located along Goodrich Street and Reservoir Road. Currently, the property is of significant size. It's the intent to carve off a total of six lots associated with the project or the development. All lots one through five will be your typical compliant residential lots that comply with the RV zoning district requirements for which they're located in. And lot six would be the remaining land of about 88 acres. That's kind of in combination with the residential being the office industrial park district, so we are in full compliance with that. With that being said, it's pretty much just the A&amp;R, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
What's the, what's the size of lot one, like acreage wise of lot one-ish? I don't, what was that? I see.
Just over two acres.
Okay, two, yeah, I see that now, okay.
RB 80,000 square feet, 100 feet of frontage.
How much, oh, how much frontage?
100 feet of frontage is required.
It does have 100 feet, okay.
Yeah, most of the lots sit around 200, give or take.
Yep.
Question through the chair. Lot one, where is the lot width of 229 feet?
Located right in the front portion.
And that's where the house is gonna be?
That would be ideally where the house would be, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm just switching, I realize I haven't looked at the topos yet, and I do want to take a, um, did the, was this submitted to the Board of Health and the Board of Health gave, gave their feedback?
Yes.
Yes, we have that, Mr. Chair. My recommendation once again would be because it's consistent.
Yep.
With the statute that the board may endorse. I'm not a big fan of seeing these sort of pork chop array lots, but nonetheless, there's no prohibition in Lunenburg, I'll bet there are in many towns, but not here. So the plan is properly prepared, meets all the requirements, there is adequate access and frontage, so I believe it's entitled to endorsement, that's my recommendation.
And I see, I haven't walked this lot, so I'm just gonna, this area, I'm just gonna ask quickly, I see what looks like some steep contours there, but that's, just being point blank, that's, that's not a gully or anything, or something that makes it truly illusory frontage, correct?
Nope, so the frontage is effectively flat for a certain extent, and then it does, far, it does go up, it's all sand and gravel.
Great.
So it's easy digging.
Wonderful.
Excuse me, another question. Are you, has, has it been thought that these five lots might be connected to a single common driveway?
No, it hasn't gone that far beyond my knowledge.
Because that corner is bad already.
Yep.
Okay.
Beyond the scope of the A&amp;R, though.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Was heading into a question from someone?
No.
Okay.
Side question.
All right, all right. I would accept either a comment saying, dude, slow down, I want to look at some more, otherwise I'd be looking for a motion.
Motion to endorse A&amp;R for Goodrich Street and Reservoir Road, lots one to six.
I will second.
Moved and seconded. All right, and that, that phrasing works for?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, great. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Side question.
Upside quick, go ahead.
No, this, this is, do we have, while we're signing, so we, we've got something we're doing. Do we have a method of encouraging shared driveway? I remember we talked about it and we worked on it last year, I think, or I came in while it was being worked on.
We do have a, the new common driveway bylaw we passed a year ago, I want to say? My, yeah, I think it was a year ago. And that, that does not, it encourages common driveways in that it makes the, we kind of expanded the availability of common driveways. And frankly, they are often the cheaper, if you're, if you're developing multiple lots, a common driveway can be a cheaper way to go, and I think there's an argument to be made that in long-term maintenance for owners, that creates a, I mean, just less driveway overall means you're spending less to maintain it.
Our encouragement is just, it'll make things easier and cheaper for everybody.
Yeah.
Well, I would, I would counter that with the sale ability, the price, I would think asking for a common driveway versus an individual driveway would also be less.
Yes.
Just my thought. So it would cost less to build, but also would probably.
And if we were gonna get really into the weeds, I think you could say, an argument that makes common driveways less appealing is that, well, then there's often gonna be some kind of binding agreement, condo, HOA type thing between the properties, but the counter to that counter is we're seeing so much, so much stormwater management that requires that codification anyway, that I don't know, in many instances, it may not change much for a multi-lot. Good question.
Mr. Chair, I would mention that, just as a distinction with the difference in this case is these sort of common driveways can never be publicly accepted or maintained
Yes.
In the town, that's important, just as a general point of information, anyone considering them, sort of on your own, as you say, it's gotta be an HOA, mutual maintenance, but the town will not own and maintain that.
Yeah, that is different than a subdivision, where they're building roads, and we have more stringent requirements for that because the town could, in theory, end up owning a subdivision road where we can't, a common driveway. Great, love it. Let's move on to 32, no, completely wrong, ignore that, let's say 70 Kilburn Street would be correct, right?
Nope.
32 Spring Street, no, I'm, yeah, no, I, in my notes, I just, I do properties by address and don't codify which it is, because it can build over time. Gotcha. So I was looking at the wrong one. No problem. Greg Roy with Dillson Roy, I'm representing the applicant this evening at 32 Spring Street with an A&amp;R plan to subdivide the property. We are actually not proposing any new building, buildable lots, we're creating what is known as parcel A, if you have the plan in front of you, apologize, I didn't bring a large We're subdividing parcel A out of the parent parcel. Parcel A houses the septic system for the house across the street, so we're creating a parcel so it will not be conveyed with lot one that's shown on the plan, so that we won't have an easement issue and that kind of thing. So this is really just a cleanup, an issue where this is one of those situations which happens a lot on a lake, in a lake community where you have the septic system on the opposite side of the street is the house. We've done a reserve, there's an existing leaching field on parcel A, we have also done the soil testing, additional soil testing to prove a reserve leaching area on parcel A, so, so that we can document compliance with Title V prior to the subdivision. We've also done a Title V inspection on that system, and it does pass, that's hot off the press, that just came over to your Board of Health office today, we just completed that, I think, yesterday, and finished the paperwork on it today. And that, those tasks, we believe met the statutory requirements of the subdivision of property relative to Title V requirements. We have also, just for your point of interest, not that it matters to you, but we have also soil tested on lot one and designed a septic system for lot one that has also been approved by the Board of Health, so I think we're, and I believe that the, you'll find that the parcel A is not to be a building lot, lot one has the prerequisite frontage and area pursuant to your bylaw.
Yeah, it looks like 125-ish feet of frontage.
Correct. The house would have to sit quite a bit, quite a bit back from the road to, to achieve the 175-foot lot width, but that is available. So I have a question, isn't, that is, just for my own edification and understanding, how the heck does it work when a septic system runs under a public road? Like, I mean, the piping runs? Yeah. Under the road. I'm not sure how this one works, we didn't permit it, but when we've done it in the past, it requires a couple things. It requires either a license from the Board of Select, the Select Board, or an easement that's issued by town meeting, I'm not sure which one this might have, and it requires a Title V variance, because anytime you, you exit the facility, which is the real property, go onto someone else's property and then go on to, that requires a variance from Title V. So I'm not sure how it was done, all I know is it exists, and we're just trying to, to clean that up. Yeah, and like I said, this is purely, because I look at. Yeah, no, it's, it's a good question, yeah. No, we've done it on, on certain situations. One, one particular time I remember, we, we went to the town meeting floor in Harvard to receive an easement for, to, to put a private sewer in a public road, which is sort of a permanent way of doing it. And then a more temporary way of doing it, if you will, is to get a license from the Select Board, they can also authorize it by license, but it's also a rescindable license, so, so anyway, I'm not sure what happened here, but. Great, no, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think to your question, generally speaking, as part of either of these sort of scenarios, the applicant has to prove that the largest public safety piece of equipment, which usually is rated at 50,000 pounds, can pass over that without damaging.
Yeah, there's practical issues to it, yeah. Yeah. Oh, great, thank you. Like I said, just, I see it and go, oh, that makes sense, I, I wonder how that, yeah, works. On these lake communities, we find all kinds of strange arrangements, you know, I think you, all kinds of, all kinds of things, so. Great, I'll turn to the board. Do we have, or what questions or comments do we have? Seeing none, I would be open to a motion.
Motion to endorse A&amp;R for 32 Spring Street. Motion to endorse A and R for 32 Spring Street.
I will second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Let's play Pass the Mailer. What'd you say?
Very impressive.
Here, okay. Okay, I'm gonna. All right, and that is being passed along. And again, I mentioned it earlier, but for those who might be tuning in now, we have public hearings scheduled, but they've requested continuance to December 9th. 791 Lemmonster Road, 795 Lemmonster Road, and 70 Kilburn Street. All three of those stormwater permits have been continued to December 9th. But we still have the public hearing for 494 Electric Ave for a site plan approval and stormwater management permit.
All righty. For the record, Chris Anderson, Handing and Engineering, here behalf of, sorry. Several projects coming through my head tonight.
And this was.
DNA Lunenburg, I'll see, yeah.
Yeah, and this was continued from our last meeting.
Correct. So we wanted to come before the board tonight just to give the board an update of where we stand. So as the board, remember, we took testimony from various abutters and the board and everything like that. We've taken those into consideration. We haven't formally made any modifications to the site plan as of yet because we're still expecting to hear back from Graves Engineering, the Stormwater Engineering Peer Reviewer. Hopefully, we should be seeing that shortly. While we work with Graves Engineering on a regular basis and we were meeting about another project and I just asked him where he's at with it. So he said he's forthcoming. So with that being said, Jeff Avini, the attorney for the projects, also intends to give an update on where we stand relative to the Pierce Street situation.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, so we have not heard back from Town Council yet. At email communication via planner, I actually called Town Council and I understand it's special town meeting season, so he may be overwhelmed. So I will circle back and try to get ahold of him again. I don't know if you've heard from him.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, through you to the board, just an update on that matter and the other items that were mentioned. I did forward all the information, the contact information and the information that the applicant provided to Town Councils. This is about three or four weeks ago, so he's had it.
Okay.
You know, he has been busy, but he has everything he needs to review what the outstanding issues are to advise the board, so.
So I understand he was going to reach out to Attorney Pellegrini, who prepared the opinion letter.
He has all of that information and knows the expectation and the ask on the part of the board for guidance, so it's pending.
Okay.
And I'll reach out to him tomorrow and see where we are. So I think we are, you know, sort of in a holding pattern on that a little bit.
I guess I understand it's special town meeting season, so he's probably buried.
The applicant has, you've done everything that, you know.
Yep, that's why I just want to make sure the board knows. The other update I have is National Grid did come out and did make some adjustments on the lighting. It's not, you know, a complete solution. It's more of a trial and error thing, but they've actually been out and repositioned?
Yes.
Repositioned the lights, I guess, but again, it's not probably the end product.
Okay.
So we're trying to move everything along as best we can.
That's even more revolutionary that you got National Grid out that quick, but, so, well done.
Was it me? I'm sorry, Unitel. I said National Grid because I was.
Unitel, that makes more sense.
Okay.
And just on the status of the peer review, I talked with him today. He has been buried, but he's maybe 90, 80, 90% complete on that, so you should be hearing from him shortly, so you'll be able to respond to his comments. I'm expecting within the week we'll have his comments and so we can consider a continuance, pleasure of the board, to the 9th, but.
We're fine with that.
That should be adequate time to turn it around.
Great. I'm going to turn to the board for any comments or questions and then I'll turn to the public. This is a public hearing. Any comments or questions from the board at this time? And because for people watching at town, this is, we're effectively discussing I, the big vacant lot next to El Forno. Just, you know, because we sit here and talk addresses all the time. Now it's helpful for people tuning in who don't live that world. Comments or questions from the board after this, now that we've had this update? Hearing done? Public comment, please.
Good evening. Dave McDonald, 155 Allen Road. It's good to see a full board tonight, so this is good. The reason why I'm here is a couple of things. And if you can indulge me for a second, I just want to tell you what I do for a living. I build retail stores across the country. I deal with all kinds of building departments, boards, planning boards. We design, build. And what I see going on here, and maybe you can help us and the community, I've been on a lot of boards in this town, from the building DPW to the building reuse when it first came out, sewer commissioner for eight years. And I applaud you guys for giving back to the time, to the town. But the reason why I'm here tonight is knowing what's going on in the town, we need to tighten up. As business owner in town, they take a lot of burden from us. Yes, they're here to make money, but they're also here to help the community. A lot of businesses in town, we need Powell's, Proctor's, El Fornos. They donate a lot. Little businesses, they need our help. They don't know construction. I shouldn't say that Powell's does. But most people don't know construction. They need to be helped. And right now, I see a lot of people just say, you know what? Here you go. Go to the meeting and you gotta, it's going to be delayed. But that's not the way to do business. It's costing these business owners a lot of money, which entails going to cost us a lot of money because it's got to go somewhere. So what I'm asking is, and I know Mike Savageau had a policy where you go through a channel. You know, if you, if El Forno is wanting to enlarge the park a lot, before a shovel goes in the ground, it should be all taken care of. So here we have a little bit of confusion where it's just lawyers are making money, not the businesses. That goes back to pay the taxes. So what I'm asking for you guys is to look at the businesses and help them. You know, hold their hands. Sometimes they need help. But trust me, in the long run, it'll be good. And this town, I've lived here for 22 years. And I remember when Walmart opened up and everyone was in a panic. But once Walmart opened up, that changed the life of Lunenburg because with Walmart comes everybody else, including people from the outside. So if you look at a restaurant business, especially, I build restaurants. You know, I do Macy's, we do Perry Ellis's, I do Starbucks. We do Bugaboo Creek when they were a business. But it's very tough to run a restaurant today in this, in this business, as you know. I mean, we have some good restaurants come and go. I think we should try to inherit, help them, and but follow the law. I mean, the law is the law. And if they don't do it right, that's, I don't think anyone's asking for a helping hand. I think they're just looking for justice and move on with business. So with that, I just want to say Merry Christmas, Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Any other public comment?
Good evening. Michael Lovell, 579 Reservoir Road. I'm going to echo Mr. McDonald's comments about business. Being a business owner in this town for 40 years, I've seen a lot of things come and go in this town. I was part of the CBS project. I actually helped the town out and used that property as a staging area for the Phase 1 sewer project. That someday I'll tell you guys the whole story about that, which isn't a really, really good story, especially for a business owner. But I am here, and I'm not, I'm here actually for Mr. Mohammed because I want to see commercial development. I think we need more commercial development in this town. But it is hard. I mean, when you, if you call an engineer in the local area, and there's a couple, I don't know if they're still here, and they'll say, hey, what are you calling for? I want to do business in Lunenburg. Oh, tough place to do business. And it is. I will tell you, from other towns and areas, Lunenburg, you know, and I think you guys are trying to make it a simpler process to do things like that. And I think that's really good. And I think commercial is, we need more commercial in this area. We do. I mean, it's crazy that there's some areas that could be developed and, you know, and Mr. Mohammed is going to spend a lot of money to do that. And I'm for that project. I'm not for that. I am for, I'm here for some things that he needs to correct on the other side of that other building that I think, I sent you videos and I hope you guys saw those videos, but we can do that at the next meeting. But I just wanted to say the same thing that Dave McDonald said about the commercial business and stuff like in town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Ryan Stober, Pierce Ave. I'd like to just revisit the whole debacle with the street. I'm wondering if the lawyer could just revisit it, explain if it wasn't adopted, is that what?
I can give you my, I mean, if you're asking, I can give you.
What is, what is the intention? Like, what does it prohibit and what will it allow if it is adopted, not adopted? Like, what's the advantage on both? Like, what's the advantage of the town if it was adopted? And we know it wasn't, so what's, what's that gain, the builder?
You know, I will actually, I will let the builder speak, I will let the applicant speak to what they see the, I mean, they're the ones who have found this. And again, when I say believe, I'm not trying to put down the position. This is outside my, I'm not a lawyer. But they're going to have, they have the argument that the town did not formally adopt it, that basically the town started the process but didn't finish.
Right.
And my loose understanding is that because of this, this lets them kind of use our parking bylaws in a way that is more amenable to their business desires. And if, I mean that as a neutral statement. I don't mean that like, sometimes people would say more amenable to business desires and that's like a loaded phrase. I don't mean it that way.
Do we know if there's any other roads in town that aren't adopted? Is, could this lead, like open up a can of worms?
Aye.
Like, how do we do that? Like, how did he find out and how come we couldn't, or can we?
I would, I think we have a question from the public if you wish to respond. Please, I'd love it.
Thank you. So we do what's called a title abstract and we go back and we chain the title back. And the abstracter we hire has been doing this for 50 years and he wrote an opinion letter that Pierce Ave was never formally taken, which means there was no recording in the registry of deeds to solidify a town vote. So it's a little bit of a legal anomaly and just to your benefit, sir, I've been doing this for 34 years. There's been other towns that have had the same situation. It was Phillipston, I dealt with Templeton, Templeton, there's actually a street in Gardner that had the very same situation. So it's not as if we want to take advantage and take control of the road. I can tell you right now, Mr. Mohammed does not want to own the road. But it's a mechanism for us to basically conjoin these parcels and use the bylaw to create our parking.
So would it be a dead end?
No, no, it's not. It's, it's, it's not a dead end. It's, it's a road that has not been properly taken, is what it is. So I'm saying if you combine the parking, won't that be a dead end? No, we have no intention of making that a dead end.
As they have, as per the plans they've submitted, I think to most people, it would look like, like on the superficial level, parking across the street. Like, here's a small road and you can park here. Or our overflow law across the street, like when I go up to Costco in Nashua and I can't, because it's the week before Thanksgiving and I'm a little behind on my shopping, I got to go park on the other side of the road there.
That's it. Sure. Thanks.
Now that you know my shopping habits, any other public comment? Or, Mr. McDonald, please.
I don't want to keep getting up and down, but, and I do shop Costco, by the way. But there are some things that you want to do in a neighborhood. And a good one is the old mill in Pittsburgh. I don't know if any of you guys have been there, but they have parking on one side, parking on the other one. And this is not, I mean, I don't know if it's a matter of a private road or what it is, but again, businesses should be taken care of if you can. And it's just kind of funny that you just said that. And I don't know why we even here talking about this because to me, it's kind of like a non-issue, except for the ownership of the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Yeah.
That's a great point about the old mill in Westminster, actually. I drive by there often. I go there often. And they do have parking on both sides of the street. I'm curious if we have any way to get information from the town of Westminster about how that happened. So it is on 2A. So it crosses both sides of 2A, so I don't know how that, that would work.
Well, I can answer part of that is, I don't know what Westminster's bylaws are. I don't know when they've changed because the old mill has been there long enough that it was my grandparents' favorite restaurant.
Mine too, yep.
And God rest their souls, they're not here with us. But when we, I don't even know, I don't know if it is unique to when we redid the parking bylaw a good handful of years ago now. But the Lunenburg parking bylaw does require parking on the same lot as the business.
Right.
Except for the Town Center District, which is designed as more of a walkable downtown. And so parking has to be a bit, paraphrasing, parking has to be avail, there has to be enough parking within a quarter mile for the business. Like, again, paraphrasing it, but. Yeah, and so part of the reason for that parking, for our current parking bylaw, I don't know if we had the lot requirement previous to the current version or not. But, I mean, if I was speaking off the cuff, I would identify our parking bylaw as on the more conservative side. But the reason it is on the more kind of conservative side is when it wasn't so tight, we ended up with frankly, some very dangerous situations regarding parking in town. Where businesses were not building enough parking for their, for their business and that was leading to on-street parking in some fairly dangerous areas. So that was kind of a safety response there. I have more thoughts on ideas that could work, but I kind of want to hold those till the next meeting once I can do a little research and flesh out some more. What we could do to simplify for everyone's sake. But at this point, yeah, that's kind of, that's where, to my understanding, the, by owning the road, it's one lot and therefore it can be on both sides. And if I misstated, please feel, nope, I'm. Great. I'm getting news that I'm spot on. So one, broken clocks twice a day, I'll take it. Myself being the broken clock. Great. Other public comment? Other comments or questions from the board? And I don't know if the applicant wants to share anything else or if you're all set? Great. Okay. In that case, well, I think we would need a motion to continue to December 9th, continue the public hearing for 494 Electric Ave to December 9th at 6:05 PM. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. We'll continue to the 9th. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And again, for those just to. Those have been continued to December 9th already. They've requested a continuance. Do we need to do anything for that, or no? Because we're not opening them, so we don't need to, or reopening them, or anything.
No, there's no vote that's needed. They're just automatically continued consistent with the request to continue from the applicant.
Great. Perfect. Then I'll move, and wow, no one from the public. Friends, we're alone. Dangerous.
Exception for whoever's watching on Facebook.
Or YouTube, or public access television. I don't know if YouTube's live or not. All right. We, next up would be our decisions. We have a decision for 1260 Reservoir Road Site Plan Approval.
Mr. Chair, I think Logan's cobbled together a decision.
It's, that's the one just directly printed from what you had in the staff report.
Yeah, so I think it's complete, and if you want to take a look at it before you sign it, by all means do, but I think it contains everything that we deliberated on and motion and voted for.
Okay, I don't, I hit the back button, I hate my life.
There's nothing in that folder.
Okay, there's nothing in our decisions folder, so.
Let me, I just got that cut from the, so let me throw it into there.
Okay, cool. Just rather than all of us trying to read the same physical copy.
So procedurally, just for my benefit, I've been putting them in the staff report.
Ah, okay.
So it should be a standalone document, it seems, by the way you prefer to do things.
I think, I don't know, do we have a preference? I think if it's in the staff report, that's fine, for me, that's fine. I don't know for all of us. Is it fine if it's just in the staff report PDF?
It needs to be a standalone document at the end of the day, like, in my office at some point, because then there's a notice of decision that gets mailed out and whatnot, but I mean, that's, actually, no, that's separate.
So what I'll do going forward is make sure, if I don't hear any comments or suggestions or editorial requests for revisions, I'll make a final document for signature the day of the meeting, and make sure I bring that, so you have a clean copy.
Right.
That you know is ready for signature.
Wonderful. The, I think the staff report, being a new document, we don't, I think we're adjusting our habits on how to review and what to look for, where and everything, so.
Yeah, it's all the pleasure of the board, but you can comment to me, obviously, individually, if you see something, and, you know, I've gotten comments. So by all means, that's the purpose of, you know, catching things, or anything that you feel like you voted differently. But as of day of the meeting, then I'll know, you don't have any concerns, and I can print it for signature. In this case, this is a pretty straightforward.
Yes, it is.
Decision with just the standard conditions and no discretionary conditions, so.
I was just double-checking the times on it. What number is that? Or, or did, I assume we gave some kind of construction time requirements, or maybe we didn't? It's part of our standard conditions, I thought, like, when they, hours, rather.
Yeah, those are the standard conditions I'm aware of.
Yeah.
And so then, anything beyond that in a particular case, you can make a case specific, or obviously, if it's next to residential neighborhood, you want to have more stringent hours?
I, I'm just, which number is the hours for our standard conditions? Is that?
I don't, yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, but if there's something there.
Hours of construction shall be limited to 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM Saturday, with no construction on any Sunday or state or federal holiday.
That's pretty standard.
Yeah. No, what's, where is that, though? I believe you was there, I just, what number is that? Or is that?
There's a page in here that has the old letterhead. It's still got Matthew Allison as chair and Eric Torgensen as a member.
I was going to ask about that, because even when you go down to the decisions, Eric Torgensen voted on it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I see that here. The, the cover page, yep. Is, has old info on it.
The cover page, I think.
Because that has other Matt, the other long-haired, bearded Matt as chair. So that is probably from a couple of years ago.
Yeah, so wherever I, you know, it's difficult for me to add it in the, you know, with the platform I have. So we'll just have to.
If you'd like, I can fix some of the scribbler's errors in that right now, and probably.
Why don't we do that? Yeah, just because that does matter. Once we get in a pattern, once I'm, you know, familiar with things, then obviously, I'll carry forward each decision with the current information, and the stuff that gets adjusted is discretionary conditions you add, and stuff like that, but.
I don't see the construction hours on this one. I'm probably just missing it. I get that. I just.
Where did you get that from, Logan, the language itself, that you just read?
I got that from a draft decision that Richard Harris wrote back in August 26th. And you'd think that something like this would be, you know, front and center on, like, the Planning Board's webpage, but it's not. It's kind of, goes back again to the lake.
Well, you don't have it anywhere else, so it's got to be, to be enforceable, it's got to be in the decision. It's a standard condition.
See, I.
Whoever I got that, those standard conditions, if it doesn't include that, it's got to, yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but our standard conditions do can include construction hours, correct? Yeah, because that's always been, like, yellow, because then we look at it and go, oh, wait, we have to then make sure we add the correct hours. So I think you may have gotten it from, I don't know.
So you've approved it already. Yeah, it's just, that's simply I'm adding it, so let's treat it as, you know, a grammatical or a content.
Yeah, because part of our standard conditions.
Whatever they are, it's got to be in there accurately, so, yeah.
Does include work hours.
Okay, so maybe we should hold off and just adjust that. Are you, I'm cleaning that up now. You give Logan a second, he can clean it up.
I, I think I would want to really verify that these standard conditions match the ones that we've used, otherwise, because we had, we took about, I won't say a year ago, but in my mind, everything's a year ago. We sat down at one point and went through our standard conditions and revised them. And kind, because they, we, we realized that there were some conditions we were pretty much always adding, so we brought them into standard conditions. I don't think.
I can't tell you where I got these, but.
That's fine. Yeah.
Yeah, if they're not accurate.
I don't think they are.
According to you, then they definitely need to be brought up to date.
Would it be better for us just to, and would screw things up if we wait until the December 9th meeting to sign, or?
I think that's fine. I don't think there's any necessarily urgent matter here.
Okay, because that gives you the time to make sure that it does match and everything.
I think I've been in touch with the applicant a couple times, and they were asking about, like, what the next steps and such were. So I don't know just how far it would push things out for them.
I'll talk to them, and I'll just say, you know, on our part, we're just trying to make sure the proper, it doesn't serve anyone's interest to have inaccurate information in the decision.
All right.
I'll talk to them, explain it, and we'll have the right decision on the 9th.
Okay.
And going forward.
Are we comfy with that?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is it possible, like other things, that they can proceed with their, at their own risk? I mean, we've already approved it.
Yeah, we've actually talked to them about that, so.
Right.
That is, yeah, as long as they understand, which they do, they're proceeding without the proper filing.
Okay. One, I, I had a similar wondering, because I hate to hold them up, but I want to make sure we're doing our part correctly. Great. All right. So that will get moved ahead to our next meeting. We have nothing under board discussions, like, kind of slated for tonight in particular. Abutting community notices. Is there anything, Logan, you wanted to bring to our attention in particular tonight?
No, not particularly. Most of them were from Pittsburgh and from one kind of bulk notice. There's some multifamily conversions, I think two separate ones happening to a cluster of units. There is a planned unit development. And then in Townsend, an age-restricted residential development was given, a variance by the ZBA, and a UPS store was given the green light by their planning board.
Oh, UPS store in Townsend, that could be useful.
PUD in Pittsburgh could have an impact on, do you have the address there?
Yeah.
By any chance, if you get a chance? Because a PUD is a big project.
Hmm.
And so there could be impacts, if it's on the town line, border impacts that could affect.
Zero Townsend Street.
Zero Townsend.
In Pittsburgh?
Yeah. If it's not near our border, I wouldn't say it's an issue, but.
It's pretty decently near it. It's just down the road from Smokestack.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's.
What I can do is reach out to the Pittsburgh Planning Office and just get a copy of the plans and know what the specific project is, and then I can advise you about whether we need to weigh in on their permitting process.
It's on the other side of the John Fitch from us, it looks like.
That's, yeah.
But.
I don't think that would provide much of an impact, but I'm thinking more, like, right on the border, across from a residential neighborhood in Lunenburg, but.
No, yeah.
Those scenarios are the ones that concern me.
Yeah, I mean, it's down the road from Smokestack, but well down the road.
Okay, that, I don't think that's a.
Yeah.
An impact.
All right. Great. Committee reports. Master Plan Steering Committee.
We continue to have quorum problems. We had a kind of informal meeting just to see where, what the direction of everything is. And as you guys already mentioned, town get-together is happening next week, December 4th. And hopefully, from there, we'll be able to start getting more regular meetings.
Great. It is my, it is my understanding from other discussions that challenges where the Master Plan Steering Committee finding quorum at this phase in the game is not uncommon.
Sure.
For municipalities. I mean, it'd be better if we didn't have quorum issues, but.
I mean, Adam warned us about it when we put together the board, so.
Yeah, and that even smaller Master Plan Steering Committees have quorum issues at this phase in the game, because it's been going on for over a year now. All right.
If you think you're going to have a quorum for the event next Wednesday, then you can post it, and that can serve as a Master Plan Steering Committee meeting to provide sort of.
I will look into that. That might be a good move.
Done that before, and then that sort of final input on the final draft.
Right. I'll email the rest of the team. That sounds like a good idea, though.
Love it.
I have a question about that. So over and under, they bid a contract, right?
Yep.
And so they had so many public meetings included in that, did they not?
I'm sorry?
Did, so did they have a minimum, maximum, specific number of public meetings that they would be part of, and is that going to impact that contract at all?
I do not remember the wording of the contract there.
I don't either.
I, I mean, they're expecting this meeting, and they have not expressed any, to me, they have not expressed any concerns while I've been coordinating, so.
Same money, less work. I wouldn't complain about it either.
This is, to my understanding, what we've been.
Okay.
This is what, and again, for the sake of being complete, we often say over/under because they're the lead contractor, but it is over/under McGinnis Associates and RKG.
Yes.
They remain fantastically responsive and very good to work with, and with steady forward momentum.
Just a curiosity, in these tough municipal financial times.
Yeah, fair point.
They're pretty close to the final product, the deliverable that'll lead to the final product. I'd say 92 or 3%.
Okay.
So, yeah, the contract should be fine, although I will tell you, I have not been able to get a copy of the contract in the planning office, which is unusual. But I will keep trying, and, but I think we're within budget limits and everything, so it's going to be fine.
Thank you.
All right. Open Space Committee.
Nothing to report.
All right. Municipal Building Design Committee.
Yeah, so I, we've had a few meetings. We've expedited the meeting schedule in hopes to contract with this ARPA money that we're spending on that. And so I think my last report said that there were a large number of responses, there were over 20 responses to the RFP, but there was technically only one on-time response. So at first, I was quite unhappy with the result. And then even more unhappy to find that as long as they checked all the boxes and fit in all of the geometric shapes that we had asked for and that they provided, that there was no way of not hiring them for this. Sure. So one applicant, and as long as they met all the boxes. So that was an issue in my mind, but luckily, thankfully, happily, however it works out, the, we had the interview with the team, and I think it was fairly unanimous of the MBDC membership, that we were very happy with the serendipitous one applicant. So, again, because of the expedited schedule that we've tried to get this money expended or contracted, the, we had a meeting tonight before this, so I was on, at 5:30 to 6:00, I was on that, and they were going over, we were reviewing the space requirements that we had previously gotten from, I believe it was DiGiorgio. There was a previous contract, and the building design, space analysis requirements for the different town offices. And it sounded like we were a little bit over on what we were shooting for over there, but it's certainly not the last meeting. I just, I just want to say that it did seem a resounding unanimity for the members that we were pleased with the interview.
Great. It's so rare that, it is so rare that people from different avenues of town government can agree on something.
Somewhat.
That's wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Allison. Capital Planning Committee. That's me. It's capital planning season. We, we've heard at this point from all the parts of town government that submit capital requests, we've seen their kind of 10-year plans out to the future. We were hoping for more unification in terms of presentation style and everything this year, but I think there's new habits to be learned, and that's not a instantaneous or one-year thing. We were hoping to have our first kind of go-round of ranking and comparison completed by now, but the way Veterans Day prevented things getting posted, we lost a meeting in there. So we're still on track, and we'll be doing more of the five-year capital plan after the turn of the new year, once we've submitted the current rankings. Economic Development Committee.
Nothing to report.
We were hoping to have our first kind of go around of ranking and comparison completed by now, but the way Veterans Day prevented things getting posted, we lost a meeting in there. So we're still on track and we'll be doing more of the five year capital plan after the turn of the new year, once we've submitted the current rankings. Economic Development Committee.
Nothing to report. The meeting last week was rescheduled to December nineteenth.
Okay. Stormwater Task Force.
We continue to make progress. We've got a goal to start advertising by spring meeting, to have kind of just the outline so we can start talking to people about it. We're doing some investigating because what we're probably going to need after we've gotten this all set up, if we can get this all set up, is a stormwater commission and we need to figure out how to set that up, ala how like the sewer commission is set up. That is the next big thing that we're looking into. Otherwise, everything continues to progress. We're working with CEI to get better information on how much this is going to cost people, how much we're going to be charging businesses, all of that information. So everything continues to move.
Who is CEI? Or what is CEI?
They are the engineering firm that we are working with for all of our kind of external information and everything of that nature.
Great, thank you. Moncton City Regional Planning Commission.
Nothing to report.
Moncton City Joint Transportation Committee.
We did not have a meeting this month, so nothing to report.
Town Manager Screening Committee. We have received, the ad went out, we received applications and we have chosen who the screening committee will interview. And those interviews are coming up in the next few weeks, couple of weeks, I think. If you need, I can get the exact dates, but we'll have those interviews and afterwards, the screening committee will then pass on some number of applicants to the select board as file lists for the select board to then review. We have. I am happy with the quality of our applicants. And yeah, that's pretty much where we are there.
How was the response? Did you get a lot of resumes?
Well, so no, the reason I'm being thoughtful is our last meeting was executive session because there's stuff you can't. Talk about because that could like, so I don't off the top of my head if I can talk about numbers, so forgive me on that one. We had fewer applicants than I would have considered ideal, but in my opinion, I would say there was an acceptable number and an acceptable number at appropriate quality. So, yeah, that's. I am of the belief that we will end up with a qualified, good candidate for the town in the long run.
I have another question on that.
Yeah.
If you do, yeah. There was something about a staffing agency.
Yeah.
Involvement. Are these applications that you're interviewing given to you by the staffing agency?
Yeah. Community Paradigm Associates are the ones we hired. Frankly, far cheaper than the competing firms and the work they do is kind, anyone you talk to who has worked with them from the municipal employer perspective or the municipal employee perspective has very high things to say about them. So they came and they collected info from this Town Manager Screening Committee, they spoke to the select board, they spoke to department heads as well and got an idea of where is Lunenburg now? In terms of overall, in terms, also in terms of challenges we're facing. They put that together into a position statement for the town. That went out with our, that was kind of part of our ad. And the applicants then respond back to Community Paradigm Associates. So they submitted their resumes and everything to them as well as engaged in discussion with them. And that kind of has the advantage that frankly, people are more comfortable going to a middle person saying, so what's going on here than they are expecting the town itself to answer frankly, what, I mean, even if we would. I would like to think we would. And so they collect the applicants, they send all the applicants to us. And ultimately, the Town Manager Screening Committee then chooses from among those applicants, but with feedback from the, from, from Community Paradigm Associates. They give feedback, but ultimately it's our choice for who we're going to interview. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
I guess, I guess, I guess my question was, was a pointed question. The, so the town decided to hire a staffing agency to help write the requests for applications and then to give you preliminary interviews and then you're still doing the interviews. I don't, I don't understand why the town is giving money to a staffing agency.
That, that, I can answer my understanding of, like, what we talked about in committee and I can answer why I got there as the usual blah, blah, I can't speak for a committee, whatever. But the answer is because they do a better job than the town can of getting it in front of the people who are most likely to be qualified and interested in the position. They are also better at coordinating with those individuals to kind of, basically to answer any concerns or questions frankly, to make sure the applicants who are applying are likely to be a good fit and understand the idiosyncrasies of our town. And they then give very good feedback along the way in terms of, oh, well, you might think, you might think this person is good or bad, but here's a trait that might change your mind that you might not notice and that kind of thing. I would say, I think we're paying, I think the total for that contract is fifteen grand or so, which, I mean, isn't a tiny amount of money, but compared to the annual salary, compared to the cost of getting it wrong, is in my mind, a wise investment. We're hiring the, effectively the CEO of the town. And I think it's imperative we get someone who's qualified, not just on paper, but can be a good match for us.
Good enough, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Minutes approval. We have minutes for September ninth meeting and September twenty-third meeting. And if you haven't already reviewed them, give it a look see, and then if you're comfortable, I would look for motions. For example, once comfy, the motion might be to approve the minutes for our September ninth and September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four meetings.
Are we doing them both as one? Because I was not here for the ninth meeting.
We can do them separately as well. That's fine. Also, you are, you are allowed to vote.
Okay.
For meetings you were not present for. You may choose not to, I often choose not to, but you are legally allowed to vote.
Okay.
Assume, I mean, if you've reviewed blah, 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 whatever you're comfy with. But I'm fine for the motion as individuals as well.
Motion to approve minutes for the September ninth and September twenty-third Planning Board meetings.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Does anyone wish more time? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Minutes approved. Meeting schedule, as a reminder, planning board meetings happen at six PM at Town Hall here in the upstairs meeting room unless otherwise noted. Our upcoming meetings include, I see, December ninth and December twenty-third. Hey, friends, I'm going to turn to us and be real.
That's my birthday, I'm not coming.
See, are we actually going to meet on December twenty-third?
Is that Christmas Eve?
Uh, no, it's Christmas Eve Eve.
Oh, well, you know, how many Eves of a holiday are we going to avoid?
As many as possible.
As many as possible, good answer.
I don't know if.
I, I get, I get it both. Yeah.
It's on the agenda, like, is it?
Do we have, yeah, I mean.
I'll be. Look at four ninety-four. I mean, it's better not to have the meeting than to have it and then put a, put the voting membership required for the permit at jeopardy. So we, as long as we tell the applicant, well, we're going to continue to January just because practically speaking, we might not have the quorum to keep your decision. Valid.
And also that, that could be done on a, on a specific basis, like if they got a special permit, they need a certain voting quantum. Like if the voting quantum is only three, then we can't even hold a meeting unless we've got three members. Unless one of them hadn't gone to a previous meeting, so. I see your point.
Yeah.
Good point.
I'm thinking of the one, Mr. Allison, that you and I had a few years ago now, where you and I were the only members present in a remote meeting. I think on like the twenty-seventh or something.
Okay.
And so we planned a meeting and then sat there chatting going, well, oh, well. I can be available for that meeting, but it is not, I'd rather not be available for that meeting. If we're heck bent on meeting, I will be there because I get the importance, but I, I'd rather be spending time with my family on those days myself.
Yeah, you know, two weeks later is not a reasonable amount of time to continue to, so. At that point, it'll be a month, but I don't see anything in the permitting pipeline that is going to require that twenty-third.
Two thirty Flat Hill, the Village of.
That is one.
I, I need to kind of go back and check the submission date on that, but I think even with that, it's what, sixty, you know, it's sixty-five days for special permits.
And that was filed about three weeks ago. I mean, you can tentatively just cancel the meeting now and we'll let you know if there's some statutory reason why we've got a, and then maybe we can move it up or something like that, whatever the pleasure of the board, because it's about accommodating you and your volunteers, if you want to do that. But the twenty-third doesn't seem like a reasonable expectation of volunteer board, so I don't think we need to.
Complete application? That was.
Well, they're chatting over there. I just want to point out that if this is something that needs to be addressed in a timely manner, for us, that means we're going to, we may want, I would encourage us to be really on top of our town email in the coming couple of weeks, if that's the case. Because if we do need a meeting in that timeframe, then that was something we'd have to kind of coordinate by email comparatively rapidly. And you're saying you think we might need a meeting around that timeframe for an upcoming special permit?
It's not a special permit, it would be a request for modification to a site plan approval.
Okay.
This is Flat Hills.
Village of Flat Hill.
Village of Flat Hills, which.
A twenty-five year old special. A twenty-five year old special permit. Twenty-five year old, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a recent excitement about it.
There's all the fun stuff in the planned residential area by law, which, correct me if I'm wrong, that's kind of a Lunenburgism, right? Like there aren't many other communities that have PRAs.
That was a Marion Bensonism.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a name I've come across in my archaeological digs. Yeah. So you and I could review that tomorrow morning.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it and let you know.
Okay.
So you can tentatively just say, scratch the twenty-third if we really think it's essential.
All right, let's pull into scratch and be on top of our town emails because if this is something that's time sensitive, we may need to act either on that date or another date.
Yeah, I'll give you some alternative dates, maybe earlier, and then you can.
Yep.
So you don't have to worry about that and if everybody's available and it's convenient.
Great. Okay. Oh, also, just, just FYI, I bought that residential development with two different properties, so I probably would want to recuse myself.
Okay, so it's still.
If that makes any difference.
Yeah, it's still valid.
Okay.
We would just need unanimous decision. It's a special permit, super majority card. That's fine, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, good to know, thank you. All right, I'm going to move us on to public comment. Looks like we have a couple of members of the public out there. Hey, members of the public on Zoom, if you want to have public comment, raise your hand.
One of them is Logan's awful gang.
Yeah.
Ah, okay. Board comments or concerns?
More of a question. The stormwater permit that was effectively denied for Sunny Hill, has the appeal period expired on that?
Yes, and I've been in contact with the applicant since, I believe, they're in the initial stages of bringing something back for that, like a separate.
A new application.
Application.
Very good, thank you.
Good, great. All right, any other board comment concerns?
Were we going to have the MBTA Communities Act as a standing agenda item or no? I seem to remember we had some kind of conversation where that, where that'll be picking up.
Yeah, if I may.
Please.
Here, I threw you to the board. I plan on putting that on the agendas, starting in January. I want to get past town meeting and the water district issue, but yes, we will need to sort of deal with that upfront. I think the master plan process should lead so that, let's assume, as it should, that concludes in like three or four months, tops. Then you have a complete master plan to guide the MBTA zoning issues and it will start with workshops and move from there for fall town meeting.
Does that give us enough time?
I think it does, yeah. Assuming we're having a special town meeting in the fall, which I understand you always do.
Yes, we.
There should be sort of a special town meeting, but that would, you know, come in in the fall before the deadline, so, you know, we wouldn't be at risk there. That would be the plan unless you want to accelerate it, but I don't, I don't think it should come before the adoption of the master plan, because then you're kind of jumping the master plan a little bit.
I'll, I'll turn to the board for thoughts on that quick because I think, I think we have a choice there and neither one is perfect, because we could move quicker. Accelerating means we don't have the master plan input, but it gives us more time to pivot if things kind of go askew presenting to the town. And Chris, please correct me if I'm misspeaking there.
I think we should wrap the master plan up in the next three months.
Yeah, I'm just.
I think we gotta, let's close that out and then there's time for workshops and vetting leading into May annual town meeting. So. It's doable, so.
Yeah.
That would be my recommendation on it, just so the ducks are in a row.
Yeah, I think I'd like us to have something for, because if we can have something for May annual town meeting, the advantage is if the town hates it, we can pivot and have a new plan for special town. new plan for special town meeting in the fall. If we wait till special town meeting in the fall and the town hates it, I think that puts us under the gun, I think, doesn't it? Or am I wrong? I don't, I don't remember all the dates and what has to be when for this.
Well, it's a question of really being fully aware of what all the issues are, vetting it, and getting the community input, and then having something that has a reasonable chance of passing. So, what is that thing? Will the town, whether they have an appetite for the state's statutory requirements, or no matter what you put before that, all of that sort of needs to evolve, but, you know, you've already had a presentation, I know, from the Regional Planning Agency. There were four good options there. I have another one in mind that, that I'll be recommending. So, all of that can happen in about, starting in about three months, have a couple of months going into annual town meeting. It's a little tight, but it's doable. Because, you know, at this point, it's, it's advanced enough where people understand, you know, what we're trying to achieve and what's required and what the options are. So, yeah, you want to do that, that's doable.
I'll, I'll turn to the board. Do we want to try to get it in if feasible for spring town meeting?
It sounds fast for me unless we were starting, starting now. I mean, we can play it by ear, but there is also expected a decision from the State Supreme Court in, I think, early February, which could change the dynamics quite a bit at that point. Or not, but, so that's, that's kind of a, you know, a benchmark, if you will, of.
Then if you're reacting from that, that's a real tight timeframe to annual town meeting.
I mean, we can put, we can go, we can take that, go slower, and get to special town meeting. Just means we have to have a real, really button-down, everyone-in-town-agrees case, whatever we're doing.
I can tell you that we're going to have about $20,000 in funding that I've arranged through Mass Housing Partnership to engage the consultant to help us with this whole process. You won't be doing this alone. It'll be the Regional Planning Agency or some other, I'll give you several options, and you can pick. It should be your call. But we will have those funds available for somebody to help us get everything lined up.
What happens, fall town meeting, special town meeting? We say, "Hey, town, we've talked to you. This looks like the best plan." And town meeting goes, eh, says no. I mean. What happens then?
Nothing other than if you're out of compliance with the MBTA Communities Act, you just wouldn't be eligible for that ever-evolving target of grants. They do, they do seem to keep changing that, so it's not to say it's a forever problem, but it would be something that you would have to, you would either accept the fact that you're no longer eligible for those competitive grants. You know, the grants themselves are not guaranteed to begin with.
Yeah.
You would, you could still then shoot for the next annual town meeting. I think the deadline is June for all of those grants. It's what's called a one-stop application.
Yeah.
You could still have, get applications in, assuming you got compliance in the next annual town meeting. So, it's not fatal.
I'm, my bigger concern is less the lack of carrot as the threat of stick that has come periodically. Because originally, we looked at it and said, "Well, okay, this won't get the grants." And that's when the government's office at the time said, "Oh, no, no, you misunderstand. The AG will take action."
And that gets one of the fundamental problems, you know, with, with that, that act, is the, you know, the legislature passed a law, which was very plainly written, of like three paragraphs and very simple, in that, you know, an unelected board, the, you know, executive office of livable communities, you know, they have, they've created the, essentially created regulations, their guidelines, and that, that gets into the meat of what the, the court case is about, is that basically, you know, bureaucrats are the ones who have dictated to the towns what they have to do. So, again, one of the issues they're trying to address through the State Supreme Judicial Court is with a proper, you know, procedures taken, if they were to be in fact guideline, uh, regulations, they have to go through particular, you know, path, whether it's, I think they're small business survey, there's certain things they had to go through which were not done because they're, they're guidelines.
So, what I'm not hearing from the board is, "Let's move forward before we have the master plan solidified." Is that correct?
That's correct. I'm not saying that, right?
I'm sorry?
That's correct, that I'm not saying that.
Okay.
I'd better have the master plan first.
All right. Getting a lot of nods there. Fine. Cool with it. Just, I wanted to make sure that that was a, all of this were conscious choices we're making. Great. All right. Wonderful. Any other board comments, concerns? In that case, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bangarrang, everybody. Friends at home, thank you for joining us. I hope you have a great Thanksgiving, and don't forget to attend the master plan, uh, don't forget to go to loopplaineunberg.org, take the survey on December 4th, go to the meeting at the public library, so your voice can be heard there as well. Thank you. Have a good night.